Good afternoon. This is the time that was noticed and posted for our work session. It's Wednesday, May the first, 2024. It's two o'clock PM. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room, Melody Lane Bisbee. And pursuant to ARS 38-431.028, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes ahead prior to the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion, and we begin with the roll call. District one?
Crosspeak is here.
District two supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Jed is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 189-729-908. If you have trouble accessing your screen remotely, please call 520-432-9200 for directions. Work sessions are timed for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Introductions, as always, for our work sessions are before you speak or give information for the record, please tell us your name and who you represent. And I realize that we have some of the, I think we have some of the principles online for this meeting. Would you introduce yourself, please, so we know you're there?
Yes, Supervisor English, Madam Chair Chuck Patusik, City Manager Sierra Vista, member of the CECOM JPA Board. And with me is Jennifer Delahay, Budget Officer for the City of Sierra Vista, providing support to CECOM.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Karwacha, and this is today, we're discussing the budget for CECOM.
Yes, I'm going to quickly overturn it over to the CECOM Director to start the presentation. But before we do that, just to inform the board, I think I have had multiple occasions that based on her leadership, CECOM is moving in a very positive direction. And I know she's had to deal with several difficult situations, but she always does it very well. But with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisors. Tammy Jo Wilkins, Director of Southeastern Arizona Communication Center. We have, we have a presentation that doesn't want to work for me today that we wanted to share with you regarding some, actually, thank you, some of our progress over the last year. So on this slide, you see calls for service. Year ending of 2023, the law calls were at 90,307. Fire was at 3,878. EMS was at 18,112, with a year-ending call-for-service total of 112,297. Some of our admin numbers are missing from 2023 due to our updates with the Next Gen 911 system, which I'll talk about here in a second. But the numbers I was able to pull for year-ending for admin lines was 132,616, with year-ending of 911 calls coming into the center of 53,399. So total inbound, inbound and outbound was 186,015 calls.
Before you go any further, can you tell me why you get, what's an admin call?
Admin is-
Why would they call 911 if they don't want 911?
Well, it's interesting what has happened in this, in this community is a lot of people don't dial 911 because they don't feel it's life-threatening enough, but they'll call the admin number, the 803-3550, to file a police report or something similar, or something that's non-emergent for like a medical call or a fire call, like a snake call or something like that. So we get a lot more of the admin numbers ringing than we do the 911 lines. It's interesting.
Okay, go ahead.
So on this slide, you do see the difference between '22 and '23. Next slide, please. Thank you. Which goes into our accomplishments throughout this year. We did upgrade to the Next Gen 911 system. And what that means to us is that we have more technology that serves our community. We have voice, we have video, we have text, and we have the ability to send photos to the 911 center now. And with that, new technology comes new policy. So I'm hoping on Friday, our Ops Committee will approve the new policy for smart transcription, which transcribes everything that comes into the 911 center. Every phone call is transcribed on the caller's end and the dispatcher's end. And then the citizen input capability is super exciting. If we have a major incident, we're just going to throw something out at Walmart. I hate to say anything because they don't want to curse us. But if something happens at Walmart and somebody is in a situation where they can't talk about it, we have the capabilities now where we can send a one-time link to their cell phone. They click on it and live feed back to the dispatch center, which bypasses us right back to the officers' MDCs, and we can see what's actually going on. So, yes, sir.
That's really interesting.
So citizen input is a technology that if something major is happening and maybe somebody can't speak about it, we have the capability to send them a one-time link to their cell phone, and they can click on it, and then it live feeds what's going on back to the communication center, and we send it back to the MDC for the officers that are responding so that they can see actually what's happening on the inside of a business or something before they go in. So it's a very unique technology that we haven't rolled out yet. We want to do so after policy is established, but we're really excited about the capability of it. It's going to help the first responders with planning of their response, and it's going to help the first responders actually see what's going on in the field instead of just going by what we're trying to, the information we're trying to obtain.
So how are you going to tell the public that they have the ability to do that?
So as soon as policy gets-
You add like the public is the first step.
Yes.
They, they see something, but they can't yell or whatever.
Right. So what we're going to do with this is after policy is accepted and training is conducted, and the training is going to include law enforcement, fire, and EMS. Then we're going to roll out a public information sharing campaign on these capabilities. And we'll be able to do, I want to be able to do like a mini-video that will be able to show people what happens when, when we're talking about smart transcription or citizen input. And if you're in a situation and you can't speak because you're hiding in a clothes racket at Walmart or something like that, but you can video what's going on, we'll be able to explain that all to them and show a demonstration as well.
Systems, exciting.
It is. And we've got more technology coming this coming year, but I don't have the names of them all yet, but I am excited about some of the capabilities. Actually, Navigate 360 is the partner with the schools that will be bringing into the communication center the emergency management software for all of the schools. So if something happens at the school, we'll be able to send them help quicker and give them a more pinpointed location in doing so. As of July 1st last year, both Wilcox and Bisbee have joined us full-time now. Discussions have been hosted with Fort Huachuca to join us on a part-time basis, and we're working through that step by step to make sure that there's no laps in service for their community. And then they're working on building their standards to meet where we're at now so that the community doesn't know if it's CECOM or their dispatch center that's answering the 911 call, which is very exciting to me. They're raising to our standards. Staffing continues to increase. Right now, we have 12 full-time, fully-trained dispatchers with three trainees almost done. They'll be done in about a month, month and a half at the latest, which is exciting because when I started, I had seven. So there's a light at the end of the tunnel. I won't, anyway. Training opportunities are being provided to staff for mental health. I believe that mental health, first aid to anybody in this type of work is super important. And any opportunity I have to send people through training or bring training to them, I'm making sure that we can cycle people through. We've done mental health first aid and struggled well, and we're going to make sure that we can hit everybody in those classes. We did in the last year bring back Emergency Police Dispatch, the EPD protocols. And we did fine-tune that program so that all of the law enforcement who is served by this are happy with the services they're receiving. We promoted one manager and three supervisors in the last year. We're working on the RAVE platform that's in partnership with the State 911 Office. They found funding for the next minimum five years of a mass alerting platform, which gives dispatch the ability to send out a mass alert in the event of a shelter in place or evacuation that's coming down the pipe from the law enforcement officials. We can send that as soon as we receive the request instead of trying to find somebody to help us send that message. So-
That was the RAVE that you talked about earlier?
Yes. And that is actually a lot more user-friendly than some of the other platforms I've used in the past at a variety of different jobs. So I'm excited about RAVE.
Can you elaborate on the State 911?
Which part?
Any part, because I don't know anything about the State 911.
So State 911 actually is pretty much, they govern how 911 systems run. State 911 gets some funding from higher levels, and then they divvy it out to the area Public Safety Answering Points or PSEPs. Every year, we have to apply for a grant, and they pay for all of our 911 equipment. Last year, we applied for a grant with the Next Gen upgrades, and we changed from one company to another. And that grant was 500, just over $500,000 for that to occur. But the State 911 Office helps pay for all of the 911 equipment that we use in our center.
Part of DEMA?
No, sir.
It's freestanding?
It's an agency, yes, within the state.
What about EPD?
EPD is, yes, that's Emergency Police Dispatch. That is part of our priority dispatch protocols that we utilize. We utilize three of them. We do EFD, which is Emergency Fire Dispatch, EMD, which is Emergency Medical Dispatch, and EPD. Some of the exciting things with these protocols that I can share with you is that since January of this year, we've used the CPR protocol 18 times. Nine with barriers, eight without. Barriers meaning we have to try to get somebody off the bed onto the floor to start giving instructions for CPR. We had a traumatic bleed incident in an outlying rural area that if it was not for our emergency medical protocols, the person would have bled out in front of his son.
So basically, this is over the phone giving someone a scrub?
While help is en route, yes. It's not, it's not a delay in dispatching. We get to a certain point in the call information, like for example, the traumatic bleed. We got to question three, and that person, help was already en route while we continued pre-arrival instructions. It's our way of trying to give people the help that they need before the help that's coming gets there. So we can get them started on CPR. And then when first responders get there, they take over on it, and then they feel like they're helping as well. And there's been, I don't have those statistics handy, but there's been proven statistics about the value of starting CPR early with response.
Second.
Yes. So we're real, we're real happy with our, with our priority dispatch protocols, and so are our partners. We've got a lot of really valuable statistics. We did deliver a baby last month, so on the phone. That's our second one. Last year, we delivered a baby, and this year, we delivered a baby. So that was pretty exciting. We're working on adding capacity to the center. We, in our current budget that we're reviewing today, we're asking for the funding for an additional four consoles with potential growth to bring on Fort Huachuca and the increased call volume. It's more and more important for us to have more bodies on the floor. Right now, we have capacity to use seven of the eight consoles that we have for dispatch and call-taking positions. The eighth position is just a call-taking position. We're looking at the fact that we are funded through State 911 Office for 10 positions to adding all 10 to the communication center. And then we did establish a dispatch diversion policy, which is working really well with the Cochise County Sheriff's Office Care Team. And we've got some really exciting work happening through that policy. What that means to you is that if we get a caller in crisis that doesn't have weapons or drugs or anything else, then instead of sending an officer, we can send the care team. And the care team can help that individual through whatever crisis is occurring, get them additional resources, and save the officers for the emergency stuff. So we're talking about revenue contribution. This is all of our, this is our funding model. This is all of our partners and subscribers and what they're paying into, into the CECOM system, basically. This year, we were able to add Bisbee and Wilcox on to our list. So this is our, this is our funding. And then we have our budget breakdown by category from last year approved to current fiscal '25 request. And as you can see, it's gone up just a little bit. Part of the reason of that is the request for additional staff. We are requesting three more dispatchers and two more call-takers for a total of 25 on the floor. We are requesting a second records clerk. Records does a lot of work behind the scenes. If they're not entering warrants, they're confirming warrants, they're clearing warrants, vehicles, guns, whatever, there are assistance. We can't, we can't do CECOM without them because that is part of the job. And when it's super busy on the radio, records can pick up what the officers are asking for. Yes.
Do you have staff for 24 hours a day?
Yes. And, and with the additional staff, we'll be able to have, for example, we have, the way we're structured right now is we have one dispatcher on county radio, one dispatcher on Sierra Vista Police Radio because they have their own frequencies. But on the county radio, everybody's on it. So we have Wilcox, Bisbee, Huachuca City, NPS, or National Park Service, Animal Control, just to name a few. And then we have Fire East Radio and Fire West Radio. I would like to be able to have minimum four people on staff 24/7, and that's not happening at this time yet. Four.
Four, four constant.
Yes, minimum. Yes. And if it goes down to three, then that third person who's, who's working fire radio is taking care of both Fire East and Fire West. And when something big happens in the center, it's all hands on deck. And I just, I, I would like to err on the side of caution and make sure that I have somebody specific instead of everybody trying to play catch-up. So I would like for a minimum 24/7.
Do you still use the radio system clean wires, or did that get substituted for? Never heard of it? Probably got removed or replaced.
I have no idea.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. So this, and if Jen or Juan want to jump in on the budget, that would be great.
I think, Jen?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Yes, we did increase personnel a little bit more to account for the 2% step increase for full-time and part-time employees. And also, we did increase a little bit the overtime. Also, the supplies line increased for those four new consoles to account for the additional subscribers and Fort Huachuca, and also the new employees.
I have a question. Who, who do the employees of CECOM work for, the county, the city, or is it separate entity?
They are employed by the City of Sierra Vista.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I couldn't remember. And so Jen is the Finance Officer for the city. Is that who you just heard from?
Yeah. And then in my last slide, it's just an example, and this is part of the new technology that we have within the system. If you, if you ever wanted to see monthly statistics or anything, I would be happy to pull those and send those. I do keep track of the monthly call volume, and we're running anywhere between 15,000 to 24,000 calls incoming per month. But this is an example of what a staffing model looks like for just a call-taker, not a dispatcher. So you can see in the lighter boxes, the date, the days, which is Mondays through Fridays, and then the times, which is right around between 7:00 and 8:00 AM until a little bit later, early evening, 7:00 o'clock at night. How many recommended call-takers should be on the floor? The really light box in the middle, those fluctuate on a weekly basis. And that one is five because there, something big happened that day. But in the lighter boxes, it's on the average of four. And that's really interesting tool when it comes to putting our schedules together on a monthly basis for our staff and what schedules they're going to.
Develop that.
That's called rapid deploy, and that's part of our Next Gen system. They actually keep track of our call volume by watching rapid deploy.
Did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Well, Petuchek. Oh, yes. Madam Chair, appreciate the opportunity. We're very pleased with CECOM's performance and the service that is being provided by it. We're pleased with Tammy Jo's leadership to get us to this point. With regards to the budget, there are, there are some increases that we're able to use fund balance, which is primarily money that was generated as a result of being down employees over the past year. But it's money that the county and the city have already contributed to the system. So that's allowing us to keep the budgets in pretty close alignment with previous ones. This year, recommendation from your county administrator, Rich, we're looking at increasing city and county contributions by $50,000 each. So this is really the first time you're seeing an increase. But you're helping to support a very, very sophisticated and highly technically, technologically advanced system, and we appreciate working with you on that.
Thank you, Mr. Petuchek.
Madam Chair, can I add?
Yes.
So let me echo what's been said, but also-
Sheriff Downs is speaking.
Sheriff Downs, sorry. Maybe the voice is so distipated and deep, but oh, I want to thank Tammy Jo and the men and women over there. She has created a very professional, high-motivated center. Thank you, Tammy Jo. I think it needs to be on the record. Number two is, let me just say, I think this is really important. All the innovation that we've seen since coming into CECOM, or their fifth, sixth year or something like that, right in that, oh, to see the new innovation, new technology is just amazing. And I want to give you these numbers, and she's, her numbers are amazing. I ask for these every day. And since January 1st to April 22nd, the sheriff's office handled 12,182 calls. Service PD was 12,200 plus calls. We're right neck and neck. And then you add Benson, or Bisbee at 2,000, Chico City at 1,000, Wilcox still on the 2,000, and then TMO at another 1,000. So a lot of calls coming through that center. That doesn't include EMS. That's just law enforcement. So busy people out there. But a couple of things that weren't brought, I want, I think it's really important as we bust this technology open. A lot of people don't remember, maybe they do. When Governor Ducey was in office, him and I, in the second year, we come up with a plan, taking this innovative center that was granted to us through a private foundation that, and the technology that came with it, was to make this a statewide system. So right now, we're in the year of making this real. So the state of Arizona took three centers, Flag, Phoenix and Tucson, Hume and the sheriff's office, their center, and then Cochise County Center here. Those will be the five backbone centers for the state of Arizona. We got a grant last year for 2.2, I believe, million dollars to connect all those centers, connect us into that work group, which means if we're transforming a mental health subject, my deputies are up at Flagstaff, Tactical, whatever it may be, we have comms all the way back to CECOM, whether it's Flagstaff, Arizona, Kingman, we'll have connections here. Second thing about it is we just got a grant last year of $6 million to give every police, fire, EMS, and Cochise County new radios. So they'll be distributed hopefully the next 30 to 45 days. It'll be out. Baby Tunes already got rich, for example. But having this technology is a blessing, something that after all my years of working here, to see where we're at today, thanks to your leadership, Tammy Jo, and I truly mean that, the partnerships out there, and then the technology that we've inserted, it's like a new center. I mean, with all the interest of the people. I know the $50,000 increase, and we've reduced that, people back two years, but we reduced that by 150,000. So we're still ahead from when we first started, which I'm very happy with.
Even a little while ago, you used the acronym TMO when you talked about, like, a tombstone.
Yeah. My apologies. Tombstone Mars Office. So again, we've come a long ways, and I don't think we're going to stop. I think we've brought in 30 and 35 million. I could add it up of outside funds to make this a reality here in Cochise County. So thank you. It takes people to run. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
I think when the concept was started, the big idea wasn't save money.
Right.
The big idea was that we needed to all be under one tent. You know, whether you were driving Highway 80 out by Portal or whether you were in Palominas, no matter where you were in the county, if you were a visitor or if you were a resident, that you knew that you could get through to 911 because it gives you a feeling of comfort. I mean, if you have a flat tire and you can get AAA to come out, that's a comfort zone. You know, so you don't have to worry about the flat tire. Well, you know, the heart attack you don't expect. That's when you call 911. And so I, I think that we're, we're certainly on our way to achieving what I had envisioned when we talked about this many years ago, was the fact that to give people a comfort zone of knowing that, you know, they're covered, that we'll get people to you as soon as possible when we get the notice. And I think it's fantastic that now you can use email. You know, it's just, you know, day by day, this, this technology just amazes me. And so I, I think we're on the right track. Any board members have any comments? I think that, you know, it's, it's important that we keep track of CECOM, the budget. We are with Sierra Vista, the, the, the big players, you know, as far as money goes. And, and so we need to make sure that, you know, it's being spent appropriately, and it, it seems like we're on the right track. So thank you, Tammy Jo.
Thank you.
Any comments from board members?
Thank you.
No?
Madam Chair, can I add one more comment? Let me, I'll shut up, I promise.
Okay.
For a little bit.
For how long?
I said a little bit. I, I think this goes to narrow level, too, and you hit on this a minute ago. Last year, you guys accepted a grant from the state of Arizona from Department of Education for Navigate 360. Now the partner between Superintendent Jackie Play, the sheriff's, granting to us, we partner with every school superintendent. How that plays into the CECOM system, as Tammy just said, it also, every, every patrol car in Cochise County Police Department Sheriff's Office has a mobile data computer in there. If there's an incident at school, that Navigate 360 that you all approved actually goes into every, it's a command vehicle. And so you pull up, it shows the layout, everything. It's just so exciting. And just remind, I don't, you probably realizing this, but every school has radios with a direct link in, every school with a direct link into our CECOM. So their school active shooter with one with Navigate 360, they have radios. Our SAT team volunteers check on every quarter, make sure they're properly working. And our ranch advisory team, our ranchers out in rural parts that don't have radios or don't have cell service have radios with their own frequency that were bought through a grant just for them. So they're on a horse and across the smother, they have a direct link right back into CECOM with their own channel. So again, we've reached into the community with the CECOM deeper than most people realize. In fact, I was in New Mexico yesterday, and what we're doing here, they forget what we're doing, and they're like, we want to do that. That's your state talking. We run a mirror of a lot of things from Cochise County doing. And one of my known good friends of yours, Jennifer, I think her name is, she's a good friend of yours. But we're, I'm proud of what we're doing here. I'm just so proud of the partnerships we have. Also.
Any other comments? Do you have any comments to add, Mr. Karwacha?
No.
Is it just you?
Okay. So it looks like the, the CECOM budget. I, I know that it was supposed to be run by us and by Sierra Vista, but is there a more formal process that we have to go through? Or is it simply a matter of notifying us how much you're going to bill us?
There is a formal process. It'll be approved through our budget process. Also, Mr. Petuchek will present it to city councils for their approval as well. So once those are approved.
So it'll be done in conjunction with our total budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments, questions before I adjourn this? Well, before I adjourn, let me tell you, we have another meeting. Adjourn this, well, before I adjourn, let me tell you, we have another meeting. At three o'clock in the board of supervisors hearing room for a work session regarding Cochise Animal Shelter. Having said that.